State Bank and Trust has been invested in Winfield and Marion County for more than a century, and today we remain deeply committed to meeting the needs of local families and businesses with excellent financial products and friendly down home service.
But more than that, we're dedicated to supporting the growth, success, and well-being of our community as a whole, because when it comes right down to it, there's nothing more important than community.
And just like our outstanding city officials, police, and fire departments, you can count on State Bank and Trust to help make Winfield and Marion County a great place to live for everyone who calls this area home.
Now open in Guen, Alabama, Pig Out invites you to come by and try their delicious barbecue. Country-style vegetables, homemade desserts, burgers, and many more items. We serve a lunch buffet on Sundays, Sunday 11 to 2 p.m. Our hours are Thursday 11 to 6 p.m., Friday and Saturday 11 to 8 p.m. Call us today at (205) 468-0574. Pig Out is located in Guen, Alabama, in the old Jimbo's BBQ building.
Hello, I'm Chuck at Span Hardware and Equipment, Winfield, Alabama. So happy to be with you today, and would like to tell you about all the things we have for the upcoming spring season. We've got you covered if you want chainsaws, weed trimmers, lawn mowers, zero-turn regular lawn tractors. We also have a good selection of barbecue grills. So come see us. Thank you.
I'm here, owner-operator of Alexander's Heating and Air.
We've been family-owned and operated since 1954, proudly serving Marion, Fayette, and Lamar County. We are carrier factory authorized dealers, but service all makes and models. We specialize in residential and light commercial HVAC systems.
So as we get ready to enter another hot Alabama summer, please remember Alexander's Heating and Air for all your HVAC needs.
Hey, this is Eric Simmons at Furniture Depot in Guen. We've been here in Guen for 10 years, serving the needs of families like yours with furniture from Ashley, Serenity Sleep, Million Dollar Rustic. We have stores in Guen and Fayette. So come see me here at Guen or my wife at Fayette, and we'll be happy to serve you.
Hi, my name is Chris Nelson, owner of Nelson Boys Paint and Body LLC, located State Highway 129, Winfield, Alabama. At Nelson Boys Paint and Body, our goals are to meet your expectations in repairing or painting your vehicle. Stop by for a free estimate. Our services include glass replacement, small and large auto repairs, and we have top-notch paint booths for your painting needs. We take all insurance and can save you on your deductible. Come see us and let our over 40 years experience work for you. We're here to assist you and to help you on all your auto body and paint needs. Come see us.
Plan your perfect stay at the Holiday Inn in Guen off of I-22. Enjoy our amazing on-site restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us. Call us at (205) 468-4625.
At Bowen Funeral Home, we understand the importance of a personal commitment to provide quality service and products with value to meet every family's need. You will find very caring professionals that truly desire to offer dignified service and true value that families need and desire during the loss of their loved one. With our newly renovated facilities, services, and quality merchandise, you can rest assured that we stand ready to meet the needs of your family in honoring lives lived. Bowen Funeral Home is located at 981 Alabama Highway 253, just south of Winfield High School. Call Tony Bowen, certified funeral service practitioner, at (205) 487-4327.
Hey, I'm Lowell Worthy with the Worthy Christmas Tree Farm here in Amory, Mississippi. We'd like to thank you for your business this year. We've had a great year and really enjoy spending time with your family out here making traditions with our family. I wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
...... Well, thank you for this day. Thank you for allowing us to gather. I ask that you watch over Eddie Posey and the other people who are sick in this town. Give us the wisdom to make the right choices for the city of Winfield in your name, in my opinion.
..............................................................................
I'd like to welcome everybody to the November 15th, 2022 Winfield City Council meeting. First item on the agenda is approved minutes November 1st, 2022. Need to ask for a motion in second to approve those minutes. Everybody got a comment or question? How it has been written? Got a motion by Keith. Second, I'll tell all in favor. Next item on the agenda, we've got Allen Stowe here with the Chief Fire Department, about a fire department hire.
Yes, thank you.
I would like to recommend tonight, the city hire Dylan Deller. Dylan is certified firefighter. He's been working for the city of Fayette for just over nine years. He's worked with us part-time, son. Gets along with everybody. He's done a good job. She's always been with us. And I'd just like to make that recommendation, hiring him to replace the last year. If anybody's got any comments or questions for Allen, based on his recommendation, that's my recommendation to the council, hire Dylan Deller in that position. Gina made a motion. Keith second, all in favor. Y'all know the rate of pay, start rate of pay. You got that with the being further discussion. Start of pay, you've got...
No, we've got all that squared away.
All right. We'll be looking for you. Been here nine years at least, Dylan.
Make water now.
Yep. Next item on the agenda, C3 agreement for 2022 to '23. Everybody got a copy of that agreement? It's what they're annually signing as before as last year.
When is the due date back? Because I know we did it in January this year.
We always, even when we vote to do it, we use the first four months behind, the third, four months in the rear of doing it after we vote. Paying.
But I'm just for a second, the invoice.
I know it's been in the air and questioned before about the benefits of the service that we're getting from the C3, being involved with the C3. Still my recommendation to the council that we stay at law with them. Been in meetings with them. There's several projects that they've worked on throughout the year, trying to get industry and actually look for kind of retail and different businesses to come to Winfield. They're trying to, like I said, promote the whole county, Fayette, Warren, Marion counties, not just the city of Winfield. We work as a whole, trying to promote the whole county, trade shows and different things, trying to look for businesses that's looking for somewhere to locate. They're very involved, working with businesses, trying to get them to understand monies that may be available through the state for a business located here, making that knowledge to any kind of business or corporation industry, wherever that maybe looking to come to areas. So based on what I know, the work that they've put in to try to help economic development in our areas, it's my recommendation to council that we stay with C3 for 2022, 2030.
How long have you, how long have the city been doing this?
Probably since I started. When he was here, when the group, before C3, it was economic development. Wasn't I a...
Community development.
Community development. Probably been at least 15, 18 years, isn't it?
They officially changed their name in case you didn't notice.
I don't know. C3?
Yeah.
Who's got it?
Back over there.
Yeah, economic development.
Northwest.
I think they updated their website and it's very nice. You should go over there. I just knew it before Angie put on my agenda. C3. C3 slash Northwest Alabama EDA. It's probably been, I'm going to say in the neighborhood of 18 years.
Has it brought anything to Winfield within them 18 years?
Yeah, they was involved. They were strongly involved when SOTL came. Of course, you know, SOTL had to do an agreement, of course, of how many provided so many jobs for so long. And SOTL did that. They fulfilled their part of the agreement for providing the jobs for amount of time that they did. I have met with them in my time in terms as mayor. I've met with them several times with different Japanese manufacturers coming to look at our site that they brought to Winfield to look at our site at the exit 30 to corridor. Went with them three times on that. I've met with them and went with them with different, with a couple of retail businesses that were looking at our exit for locating a business. I've been with them in those meetings. Land developers or whatever. Probably I've been five, six times that I've been with them, for making different CEOs or whatever comes. Tim said he'd like to talk next meeting. Give him some thought. Angie just got that in mind. If we want something to do. If that's what the council wants to do, we can talk about it. They'll take no action to that. That's a table. Reason to have to book them up. Keith, do you want to take it? Majority booth. You want to talk it?
This whole side, I don't hear you. Sorry, Jay. Sorry. Hi, thanks.
Next item on the agenda is discussion of insurance costs. And this is one of the items that we moved from the last meeting to this one for so Gina could be present. What's going on there with the insurance cost?
Well, it was just in January, the cost is going to get worse. And I had brought it in front of the council to see if we might could, right now, we do a 70/30. If we might could even do just a 75/25 or an 80/20 with our employees. And I know Mike is in a breakdown, I believe, to see what it would be if we did that in the budget. Could you mind?
Yes.
But now this is not going to take effect until January, so. In January, Angie, if this is going to start?
The coverage will start in January. The deductions will start in December of the 6%.
Second.
I don't have it right. Even Mike did have it.
You go around copies. You go around copies. You're like...
Yeah.
Unless you know what it is. Is he going to bring you a copy of what's going to cost the city or the amount that it would cost you?
Yeah, I think it was a breakdown.
You said a 90% going over where, the whole project or... So they opened it through on the east side and it then went to the north side and then they locked the west side? Well, through on the east side. I went through there today. Real happy with that 12%. Can you make it 12%? Just, just like to follow.
Well, now this tells you what if we do this, then we buy 25, this is what they're paying.
Step up just a second, Matt.
That's what we pay. Yeah, this is why, actually what we need to look at is on the back.
Turn it on the back. So it's coming into council this way. This is what we're at now. This is what we're at now. Okay. As a single. But do you know how much we're adding to? Here, for the current, that's 7%. Then employee, this number's up. 65/30 a month. Increase goes into the bag. That means 65/30 a month. Does that 76? Now, increase, that's the employee increase. So here, the C3's increase, that's what it's coming to see. Yeah. Percent. And the family is the same. That's what we're talking about. For your... Percent. I understand these numbers. If it's at this, it's that amount. Where we're at now is at that amount. Well, I'm hoping I understand now. This is what it's going, this is what the C3 is going to call more. Not changing the formula, but this is going to increase the... That's what's going to cost the C3. That's what's going to cost the employee. Same down here on the bank. But this is going to cost us. The C3's going to have an increase as well. And employee. So when we figure both goes in, is that figured in? Is that amount left there? Is that both of them or is that just what it's going to cost us? Change it to that percentage? That's the C3's cost. They got extra cost for the C3. Not them employees, but just the C3's total. That's the point. The C3's increase plus the employee increase. Well, if not including anything with employees, that would just be the C3's increase. C3's portion or... 70% to create 2/12. That includes that 6.4% increase. Of course, the C3 pays 7% of current. So that includes that 6% increase. The C3's 7% less.
That's the total thing. Now, this is the total. This is up 70, which is a C3 employee.
Yeah, that's for the year.
So, and then these are just the yearly amounts, just for the C3. That is both of them. And then this is the C3.
This is just 6% increase.
So this is my...
I think that's...
This is my, like, base take equal that.
That's a total increase.
Oh, it doesn't... I'm trying to, I'm close to that.
If we don't make any changes, we're still going to pay that 7% for next year. And that clears an increase. So if we go to that, this is your tax rate. That's 75% type check for that number. Nowhere. That's just, that's what the C3's 7%.
71% or about 2%.
Employee is going to pay 30%. C3's paying 7%. That includes the increase. The last movement is five helps take the load off. 6.4 is going to...
Yeah.
Yes. If you don't change anything, we're giving a C3 increase to those employees. That's what you guys are paying right now? So if we go next year to 75, you will drop about $30. So you have $30. You will be living. Yes. Drops. Now, that's what...
Your 80/20 would really save the...
Yeah, this is...
Okay. Every city around the...
I don't care.
You don't want to do.
Increase growing in, in. The increase of about sixty. Do what it is.
That's like, not anything.
I don't.
Even insurance.
If the six point four is included, so it's, it's not doing, it's taking part in the extra part. Yeah, they've dropped them, it's going to actually drop the amount of people who pay. Yes, yes, you're right. It will, it will drop, for example, at four twenty-nine, seven percent, will drop to three fifty-eight, and seventy-five percent. Seventy, no, we don't, they don't, it's, it's, it's seventy dollars, seventy cents on some time. It was great, fifty-eight.
It won't be much, but it will be something.
I'm just saying seventy-five, seventy-five. Yeah. Seven, sixty, seventy, you are for. What was it due for? Sixty dollars too much. Ninety-eight. Six point two forty-four. I don't even pay no. Just works out that way. They would pay less than. They just pay, they're saving, they're saving, they're saving, taking a burden off. I, I should get in period with the C, you just have to. Six point four. I think it's got some change in this, so they've changed this. I don't know, it's a twenty-four percent, that increase, all of that penis up on our floor, can't really do that. This, this is a total cost of that six percent increase. Because they said ninety, that's not ninety-seven, wasn't it? It costs C about thirty-three thousand in connection, if they just simply put the increase, employee, they have to pay. C is going to pay twenty-three, of course. They don't pay. And if you say, this is really, I don't know, any pretty quick, I don't include, or they increase on the employee's. Set those two together. Yeah, almost thirty-three thousand. If it keep this.
Going in more, he's paying, so he's saying.
Theoretically, theoretically, it'd keep us at one sixty-five, and that's four, four whole. We're right, and we still have to increase. Does that make sense? You might wouldn't have that correct. Should be. The C's paying all the increase. I know what I'm saying. Well, the C, right. I know what I'm saying. At seven percent. About changing this number here is what makes their finger low, if they see. As well, number goes up, employees, number goes down, the C's number goes up. Insurance, they would pay full amount of employees, they would pay that increase, that's a, you know, source paid insurance, anything you have to do. So, so anywhere you go, it's good. Understand, you understand.
So you're saying, I'll give this.
Just, just, like, you're, like, you're.
They're going to all pay, and they'll pay.
You pay for the increase. You have seventy-five percent, don't count you about twenty-seven five, so you've got, you've got hundred this, in C this.
Okay, come back.
Six hundred. Can't even read the size. James, we did. Yeah. You want to walk back backwards? I don't know, how, you know, James, you got any discussion about your thoughts on this? Would kind of left you over.
Yeah, I've got thoughts on it. I think we've got six point four percent increase in insurance, and it's only fair that we divide. Have what percentage is worth at right now, right now, one point nine percent would be employees, and the other part, the other percentage would be C's part of it. That break even for the employees. C's still paying more, but employees would be paying same percentage wise, amount of money that you're paying now. You made it one, raise their percentage by one point nine percent. Seventy-five point nine, two percent, or seventy percent, now, we're at thirty percent, that'd be one more time, up to twenty-nine, up to thirty.
Eighty, twenty-six, zero, three hundred and thirty.
I put in twenty-eight, one away.
Think you got it. I'm just saying, say five twenty-five.
I say, you're standing at five twenty-five, or just give that a seat for.
From a financial standpoint, I would understand, I want to make sure that I understand why it might come to explaining. I, I feel like, I mean, my recommendation to the council would be for C to take six point four percent increase, leave the percentage as it is now. C to hold six point four percent increase of the insurance, employees. The, the delta's a step aside. Be the one, the rest.
This supposed to be what my percentage is today?
Sorry.
I supposed to be what my percentage is today?
I know, let's use confusing everybody. I'd like to ask for most of the C, type the six point four percent, same second, all in favor. There'll be no increase to the employee. Next item on the agenda, Gina's got, discussion of American Rescue Plan funds slash employee pay. Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Um, I know we tabled this once, but I'm going to ask the table one more time, because I talked, I've been talking to someone about this. And that's something that would I could do with me, as far as, something that was kind of brought up before, and I'm wanting to kind of get some more information out of it, so.
You okay with tables, Jane?
I'm okay, tableing that, and the next one too, which we have the same effect.
Keep. We'll table both, I five and six. You know, go ahead, you go to next item on the agenda, so, hold business, keep it for you. Same thing. Anything's been fixed?
We thought so, they did a really good job, and we came in this morning, and it would knock you out, so they're coming back tomorrow. The, the pipes between the two restrooms, when they cut those off and went from floor mount to, went from wall mount to floor mount, all those pipes were open, there was no cap or anything on them. And it's going up in that plenum system, but it was, it was bad today, so we've got, there's somewhere we've missed, there's something else.
Can you elaborate with the?
Fat drainage sewer, or sewer and drainage.
Um, the water department, the, the, has, that, they, they're doing the water department.
About three hundred thousand. Todd, you know, Todd explained it to me, and Angie showed to me the, you know, the resolution reflects three hundred thousand.
The grant agreement, that is, reflects three hundred eight?
They're calling, calling it a grant, it's a, it's a grant to the water department.
Yes. Yes, and I'm preparing a grant agreement, and. I guess the best way to explain what I'm doing right now is I have requested, if y'all will remember, the mayor guy, Luke, ordered, what, to do a cost estimate, a project cost estimate. And he had a list of items, and he just referred to that down here as the project. And the water department was going to be given the money to do the project, but their engineer is preparing what's called a scope of, a scope of the project. What they, what they're going to do for the three hundred thousand dollars, and I want to make sure, and the reason I'm doing that is because I want to make sure that we're all on the same sheet of music. This is what they will do for the grant. Luke's involved some things that don't have to be done, the whole idea was booster pumps and getting the water pressure, et cetera. His, his estimate included some fire hydrants, some six inch, a six inch water line, that was more than just the booster pumps down there. And if there's going to be an overage, i- i- if, if, if the water department's going to be responsible for an overage, I want everybody, I want both sides to agree on what the project is, what the scope of the project. So I'm doing this grant agreement, and it's going to have a scope of the project in it, and then once we come back, the water department's approved, that scope of the project, then I'll bring it down here. And assuming everybody down here agrees that, yeah, that is the project, that's what we want done for the grant, then when we're both on the same sheet of music, then we'll sign the grant agreement.
So I don't think there's no problem with council on what's actually in the scope of the work, it's just the fact that we want more pressure from that right control booster pump. Whether it's got sod and don't need sod, or if it's got rock and don't need rock, I don't think, you know, for pipe, if it don't need.
It was the six, the six inch line, because y'all know what, what, nine, there was nine thousand feet of six inch water line on there, don't, it don't really have to have it for the increase in pressure. And at, at the cost of PVC right now, nine thousand feet of six inch PVC is going, is going to make a tremendous difference in the actual cost of the project. And so we want to make sure that the council's good with.
Hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred dollars for the pump. How about? Hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred. Only thing that I would ask for, with water department, is make sure that the two inch line's going to handle the pressure.
It will. It'll handle too.
I don't think anybody cares what size that line's coming to that, come into that meter, if it's going to give them more pressure in that bathroom, you know, or bathroom, somebody else's. I don't, they don't care what's on the ground. Most of them on that two inch line already had the pump at their houses, so. Their own. Their own pump, yeah.
So they're going to get rid of that?
I'm sure they have the force, you know, they'd be glad of that. Yeah, that sound, that was I taught and made what I was telling them. Could we jump, I jumped the gun, I guess, like I said, it's just kind of a misunderstanding, it's just miscommunication on my part with the water department, when I had our engineers start growing and stuff, the water department. That sound good to me, for the, I taught.
That's the reason, I mean, we talked about it at the water department meeting, the board meeting the other night, and I'm waiting on Ryan to, to give me a, give me a scope of work. It encompasses what the project is, so that we understand, we're all talking about the same thing, we're talking about the project.
And the red one.
I, I was talking earlier on that. On the traffic signal, the signal lights out.
So that it can be like, like, update everybody on Facebook, what's going on.
Everybody's saying the following, and everything delivered, so we all thought we was all ready to go, and then consultant with the insurance company verified we would have, for whatever, may even have a question, but questioned me about the lights that's already there. He assumed that those lights, the traffic, the signal lights that's hanging there now, was the ones to go back on the toll, and it's not, those, those lights belong to the state, those lights have got to be replaced, those are not the same lights. So I don't think Angie's going to need mail or come and forward what the timeline is now on receiving those traffic lights. But they've got to also receive, when the traffic light, you got to get the cameras, because we didn't have a loop, we had camera system to change those lights here in the home, so all, all that stuff that's in there is, they've got to have all of it. So we're back to, a little bit, kind of back to the goal of what we're doing.
So we don't have insurance.
Yeah, but I, we, we're trying to push for an answer this week for the timeline of. So the insurance company missed that, they kind of missed that, about the light. Yeah, they wouldn't know it though. About that point. You have questions?
I want to.
I think, last week, we had an astronaut contest for, well, I haven't reported it.
We have the new one.
Do you have that? Bring your library on here.
Um, it made up just a couple thousand, but the.
But it wasn't for a hundred and five thousand.
No, but that also includes, you're talking about the, the concrete, that's what the new concrete would need, even in drilling, of course, as well. Not the price, but the space.
That does for the tents, cold, being on the road.
Yes, and, and making pickleball courts as well.
Well, that also be in that right. Trains. You're trying to be a boy.
Look, look at it, but I don't have a, for that and the nature trail. It, it was, twenty-one or twenty-four, and it's twenty-six now.
Is that going to do it for life, do you feel like that needs to, or feel like that that needs to be?
Is that when you, if you add the new concrete, this is without the new concrete.
Right.
But if you put the new concrete and do this, I think it would be.
The new concrete's going, how, what, or what role is that going to play?
The surface now is cracked, and it's dilaminated, and if they do this, it's not guaranteed till they get home, if you do it over the existing surface.
How much, uh, surface area would that be?
It would be a four inch slab, and it's something a hundred and eight, five hundred and twenty.
You don't press it. Figure that out, James. What'd you, what'd you say?
Hundred and eight, about hundred and twenty. Hundred and seventy-five. You know. Last, one hundred, what was it? I haven't come up with that much, I thought it was still about a hundred thirty, hundred forty, so how much are they paying?
Thirty-two thousand.
We get a discount too, Robert's in USA, gives the city a discount.
At two hundred, I thought, about thirty-two thousand. That goes for twenty-six, the rest of it's seventy-three, twenty-six. So you're looking at a total of about, shop sixty-five million, yes, that's. And that'll put it like it needs to be.
But not half million.
Huh?
But not half million.
Is that painted with tennis and pickleball and?
The only thing it doesn't include is the, um, court valet that you can, um, roll out. Those are ninety-five dollars, is to put the nets on, for the pickleball. Those are ninety-five dollars is to put the nets on for the pickleball and the benches, if you need the benches on the sides.
How long did yours take to come?
Um. James, I'm not particularly sure, but I believe it's five years.
It's costing five thousand.
Nothing with that. Should have, like it needs to be.
I've been there almost twenty and I've been there for. I've been there for almost twenty and it's been the same since twenty years. We're always. So it is, it's done well. I'm sorry.
Want to try it?
I haven't heard anything from Luke. No, no, I've only checked my email picture.
Is that some kind of special?
Okay.
And they're going to use the sign company to raise our road, you find, they're going to pretty much reach out to sign a paper.
I told you a story. I do have an email from him.
We don't see it, do we?
It's just the ground on track.
I want to come over and look at track.
The track is in need of. It's got a lot of cracks and. A little kid who is stuck in it. He's been in this fellow, whatever, but whatever. I'm interested in there now. There he is.
And this is a walking trail.
I think it's the track in the.
Walking and nature trail. Okay, so it's love, that makes me go a little better. Did you add enough to that? Did you add enough to that? We have the twelve distance. Lot of. You get, you have to be sort of.
Like you say, yes, or, or just put it in the way, it's like if you want to put it away, your tenants, you got to ask them. Because it's probably. That's what I'm saying.
What's that going to do about to? We're going to, way from. I, that's a.
There's a, three real. All side of the, by the football and that was like your left out. The white. That's why I said. Now the track, the white one. Right. That's the walking.
But it's breaking, breaking it a. It's on the, it's on the surfaces and. It's in the areas that have.
I think there'll be over. That's what I tell you.
It's overlay.
I think that was.
I don't think it'd be turned up.
I thought it said something about repair or.
They're probably sealed.
They'll paint over it and that.
It ain't going to have to build up on it. It's going to be.
I think that was the fresh deck that were getting pulled on the side is what that was for.
Yeah, probably fresh one.
What's our state bid price on asphalt? What's our state bid on asphalt?
About a hundred, hundred and more to it.
He's got to bet a hundred eighty-five dollars on here. They should be a state bid on the state price.
I don't know if that price is high. I noticed that, but I think that price may be higher because of the the work that it is. It's kind of locked in.
It's asphalt. It's asphalt.
I'm not sure it's the same asphalt. I'm not sure it's the same mix.
That's what I'm wondering.
I think it's different.
One asphalt plant ring.
Yeah, but they, what time, what times you can't get roads paved because they got, they're mixing asphalt, they're paid. It's got a different mixing. We'd ask with that, I don't seem like it'd be in the board. It's not because of scope of work, the board is calling the change in the materials in it.
Would this, I know we have said before, like, the way the track is now, you're having to use the school's track for, for the track to park. Would you be able to use this now and will you start using the school?
I think technically we could. I'm not sure without a decker's permission, we can paint the lines on there.
On the track. They won't be a competition. They'll consider it a competition track.
I think it would be, you would have to get permission to.
Yeah, my, my hands have already been slapped for trying that years ago. By a decker.
But they could at least practice there if the competition wasn't there. A lot of schools use our track to practice, like brilliant in the smaller schools don't have a track, they come to ours and practice. Bad's tennis team is practicing at our tennis court.
So we'll go back to the tennis court. The quote you got. It would be a local contractors, I guess, on the concrete and then the, the, the quote that you got, they would come in and do what they had to do for the tennis court on top of that new concrete.
Yes, sir. And he said, if, if we chose to put the new concrete, he would be glad to talk with the mason to make sure that they were all on the same page doing what they were supposed to, working together.
Is your two courts up there?
The tennis, yes.
This is the whole line.
But the one that's going to be the pickleball can still be used as a tennis court?
It, it would be versatile. The, um, when I talked to Mr. Nichols, there's already a big waiting list that, you know, it would be the spring before the, the work would be done.
Is there enough lighting up there at that tennis court?
There's lighting.
Is it LED? That we ever changed it, LED.
I'm not going to say it couldn't use new lighting because it could. The fans could use a little work tightening it, but I'll say what I can hear.
First off, I don't know what pickleball is all about. I think on Wednesday night, they're having celebrity pickleball tournaments on CBS. I'm going to watch to see what pickleball is all about.
It's all the rage.
I've already picked out my senior team.
Is it like fantasy football?
What they're going to play is going to be like fantasy football.
I'd like to, I mean, I'd make a recommendation to council that we would have moved forward with the quote that you got here and replace that concrete and go ahead and set this tennis court up, you know, fix it like it needs to be with the pickleball. I'm thinking cracker bar, I'm going to pick it up with a pickleball. It's getting suffer down too.
We're all tired.
But yeah, I mean, I think we need to move forward, go ahead and we've been putting that off and kicking it around. I think we need to move forward with the place, repair this tennis court. It's been, how many years since we've done anything to that, to really, that it's been there?
I think oh five is the last time the tennis court was resurfaced. They tried to repair the cracks and then paint over it. And I think that was oh five, oh four, somewhere through there.
I mean, that's price of them coming in on top of that concrete, new concrete. I mean, I think we're, that's basically going to be a new tennis court for that amount of money. I think that's. I'm going to ask for motion. We'll go ahead and do that. Set it, keep all in favor. All right, now back on the walking track and the nature trail. We know asphalt's not going to get any cheaper. We know that we've got issues on both of them. I think that we've got it open for the public to use and it's holding them, it's holding them up from doing tournaments. With, you know, I think I'd like the city council move forward, trying to go ahead because we know that asphalt's not going to get any cheaper. No time soon. I'd like to see us move forward, trying to go ahead and do what we're going to do. I think we need to do both at the same time because I've been there and watched. They've got quite a few patrons that goes down on, on both the nature trail and the walking track. There's, there's quite a few people that utilize, utilize that in the park.
Now, I know you said, and I know one of the problems with the walking trail are all those roots that have busted it up, but they were going to fix that, right?
They're going to go around it.
Go around it.
Change it around. Change it around. We have the money to do it. I mean, we, we budgeted X amount of dollars for asphalt, which is for roads that, that Mike has put in there. But we have the money and we want to go ahead and have that, have that repaired. To, I mean, I'd like to see us go ahead and do those upgrades on that track, the walking track and the extra.
You know, the city of Enslake last year had two and a half miles of city roads resurfaced with a new process. Where they go in and they spray, well, because that was about an inch, two inches thick. That was twenty percent house for asphalt.
Worked out good. Satisfied with it.
I'll call, I'll, I'll call them there with Eric. When you call them, ask them how those roads, how they look. Because when you do it for twenty percent, I'd rather do it for twenty percent than I had a hundred percent.
See, we'll look into maybe getting it fine.
I mean, the, the nature trail without doubt is going to have to have asphalt on it, but the walk, the track could possibly have as good or better surface put down with this new process, just put asphalt down.
Go ahead and give them a few things.
Plus, from what I understand, about two hours after you get it put down, you put traffic on it, which was cars in their case, but in our case, it's feet.
Look, he don't have that. He's got all that figured in together, don't he?
Is that?
Yeah.
He's got eighteen thousand dollars for mobilization one time, which is probably still going to be eighteen thousand dollars to move the truck.
The asphalt's together.
Now.
The asphalt's bigger together.
That, you know, that's an estimate. If you, if you want to wait, we'll look into that and see if we can get Luke, maybe to break that down.
Get Luke to look into that process.
Use up the Enslake. We still, we still got a crew up here and the weather's got them built up right now.
But if you're on the nature trail.
Yeah, if we could cut down on that mobilization because they're already here. I mean, I think that might be something that we're going to look at. They might get Luke to maybe give me a figure on what it's going to breaking apart and then we'll look into what you're talking about, the new process. While we got them here.
Get in there, get the nature trail and like that.
But if I was bringing a different type of machine to, that's what I'm thinking, you know?
Get there, get in the nature trail.
I'm going to, if they let me, I'd go and equip them up for half that. I'd go get it. I'm going to truck and do it for half of that. What's your dog? Get Luke to give us a price on?
Yes, see if he can give us a price before they leave town to make the trail, then we'll see what can figure out in this new process to put on top of the track.
Mr. Owen, are you going to talk to the mayor, Beasley? Would you ask him in a wet area how that holds up if that's, if the moisture will make a difference?
They're on city streets in Enslake, I wonder, you ever been over there?
No, I haven't.
Yeah, I like her to separate it.
Like it was much more.
And it says asphalt.
Um, they're drawing the track out of waters.
He's got three hundred fifty tons and a hundred eighty-five ton, sixty-four, seven fifty. You know, it's, uh, let me do some, let me do some more on this. Let's come to revisit that part of it. I love to talk to projects. You tell it up, whether it's under old things. It's all I do. James, your time. Do you got it?
Uh, the gut cup is probably in the ground today. On one twenty-nine, I was up there Saturday, headed and hustled and started stopping, making pictures for everybody, but.
I sent them some. Glad to see them moving on that.
Some mayor attacks on Friday, someone come up there with a shovel, have ground writing the board.
Talking about the paving project, I'd sent a question to some of the council about maybe trying to, the reason I'd question is if we're, what's your sticking up there? We're going to stick in there to that point earlier on. We're going, we're coming in about ninety thousand dollars less than what the estimate was. And es- the estimate to do Cambridge is one twenty. We're ninety thousand dollars underwater estimate was on the other paving projects. So I'd like the city council, let us if we can get them on here, we'll, we'll go ahead and do Cambridge.
There'll be more next year.
I'd like, while we've come on the budget under what the estimate was, to go ahead and Gina thought that Cambridge was involved, was, was included and Cambridge was actually in the, in the list. And then we picked through the list of the old and that, but. I, I, it, it'd be made a motion, I said. All in favor for us to go ahead and move forward, let me get them off tail loop because I, I'm glad to see us come in under what we, our estimate was. And it'll let us get that, we'll be looking a lot better on that side of town. We've got two new houses at the end of Cambridge. One's been built and sold and then we've got another in the process. A roof or, if you can put the roof on it, hopefully this week. At the end, it wrote on a thirty something, I believe, and it's going to be several houses to do it in that thirty something.
I called them all.
I know. And of course, y'all heard me say about the license, Gina asked about that, so we are, um, we're still working with insurance on the theaters. Is it theater or the, or the pastime civic center area where we think that we may have a roof issue?
The new roof and the theater has a leak and Miller was here today. So they, they thought they had patched it already. This was after the new roof. It's leaking in the green room at the city center. And so they're, they're watching that.
Or they, or has Miller looked and what Mike was looking at for that roof being picked up and set back there?
Now, that was on the theater and I talked with Angie and she asked the adjuster to call me and he did. And we had a discussion and he's agreed to send somebody back up there and look at it again. Because he's saying right now that they're not planning to replace it and we're concerned because we're afraid we're going to have leaks.
You hearing all that?
So he.
I got memo of the phone call, I read that one. What's going on?
We need to make sure we got a doctoring of the public. We've complained about it since December of last year.
Yeah, we were told initially, initially that we were getting, and the adjuster is the one. the one, I mean, the consultant is the one that said that and he told me, he didn't say it that Wes said, but he did say it and then now he's saying I don't think it needs a roof. And I said, well, we're not trying to get a roof if we don't need one, but if we do, we don't want to end up, we don't, you know, thinking that we don't need a roof and us not getting one.
Because if it's, if it's doing like they're saying, water getting under, it's going to be, it's not going to be, I think it'll be an all at one, all at once notice and that, it's not going to be a gradual notice, it's going to be an all at once notice and it's not going to be very good.
Well, our concern, the biggest concern we've got is if it starts leaking and it gets into our sound and lighting system, we're talking about a lot of money there, you know, So he agreed, he said that he'd go back up. I told him I had not been up there, didn't plan to go, but that Mike Fredmore had been and that we trusted what he said and he's seeing water that's actually running under something up there, some of the new roof and he says that's going to cause you a problem.
When you're saying new roof, you're not really saying new roof, you're saying new cover.
Oh, whatever's...
Right, because we haven't, we don't, they haven't had a new roof put on, we've had, we've had a new cover put on.
You mean since the tornado?
Right.
We haven't had anything on the theater.
Okay, so they ain't done anything?
No, no, they haven't done anything about it.
So suspected that it came up and back down.
Right, that's what we were told initially. And, and also Mike has seen, there's places up there where you can see where debris has hit it and done some damage to that. So for the only leak we've had in the theater has been right down by the theater, right by the stage and they patched that. I think Mike had patched it and then maybe some of the other people that were working did some old work up there, but that was early on. Since then, we haven't really seen any leaks, but we don't know where the water that Mike's seeing running up there, we don't know where that's going. So we're assuming it's going somewhere, just hadn't made it through the, down to the...
I believe we'll probably be able to tell by February. I think it's supposed to be the weather where we're going to see, you know, like, if it does show that it has a problem, that we're likely going to have damage that was after the fact. Well, you know, you've been doing that, you know, you know what's, what it's like?
We've documented and kept notes in our files about what we've seen and what we've reported.
Certainly, you got documented yourself there.
I haven't sent them yet.
Just, I've got a letter from the Kent Foundation, they've enclosed a check, gave us a check from the Kent Foundation for $25,000 to the past time theater board and $25,000 for the mainstream program by the Kent Foundation. We're very thankful for that and keep that in mind. I guess that's all. Brett, how's our new police hires working in there? How, are you, are you still, still have the same two hires, still have the same two employees that haven't stopped?
I've got, I've got one that's on duty and the other one just assumed is, they get situated at the fire department, we'll put him on duty. And we're not, I mean, it's not a roof because they can't put them in, take them to the cabin and then where they're not.
When's the start date, Mr. Doherty? The when is the... Thanksgiving? When is it before Thanksgiving? Arthur West got any food in the way and they asked for a monthly pay bill and nobody's got a question about it.
I got a question on that.
Oh, while you're looking at that, I'm going to jump back just a second. A trip two, everybody come here with A trip, A trip two, a grant, it's called A trip two. It's a grant that you can apply for, it's $2 million. It's usually, it's a 100% top grant. I went ahead and asked for, to apply because you've got so long to get your paperwork and stuff in, I went ahead and been talking with Wes Phillips and Luke, I've had them meet, maybe trying to get us up a plan to apply for that A trip two grant, Mr. State. What I'm asking, asking them to do is one of that, Wes involved up there at the 129, the exit 30, the north side of the interstate and on the south side of the interstate is to, we need, when we start developing, to help develop that and make it more appealing to industry or whatever, we need decelerating, turning lanes, coming down the hill from 129 to go both sides, that property where they're cleared on both sides and then in front of the hotel where we're at, so the council kind of, I don't know that, we don't apply for it, don't know that we'd get it, but we have a greater chance of getting it, a greater chance of getting it, just like we did with that rebuild Alabama. When we put in a, put some skin in the game, so to speak, to help. But I'd like the city council, if we have five or two million on the ground, I'd like the city council to think and consider us putting in 100 pieces, $200,000 to get that $2 million to help make that project. I just want, I want to get out there starting on the legwork, trying to get, get it, we're returning the application for try to apply.
$129,000 for that?
Sir?
It's $129,000 for that?
Yeah. I don't know if y'all, but you do realize it helped us on that rebuild Alabama and we did that and we're doing that match, double match. Did you find it, John?
Yeah, I found a part, page five, it runs a rock. And then there's another $295, $290.52 for the rock.
Question about them, I don't think it's about what it was used for.
It's for, it's for, it's for...
Yeah.
You know what I don't think, you know what it's for?
Oh, I don't know. I'm sure we're all afraid of that, but he's not here.
Rock, rock, he's going to play another round of rock.
He's typically who gives this person the hog.
Let's leave that part out until I can check on it because I haven't noticed what that, what that, we don't know where that rock went. Trying to think if we've done any, we haven't done any ditches or, well, I'm trying to do any ditches or any project work over there.
Page seven, it's where the other one of the rocks is.
And that, that must be, yeah, that's, rock haul that evidently, that's probably the, that's probably the rock that was hauled on this first one, that's the material on the first one. I'll find out on the table, we'll leave those two out. Got any other questions on it, Al Jones?
I think you can add any questions, Lou.
Alan, while we're on it, this kind of Bennett looking over this, how, what about your volunteer firemen? You got, you're getting pretty good response from volunteer firemen and we're still kind of stagnant on enough people interested to...
We've got our ones that responded, we're stagnant on the, on the red. It's, it's a problem everywhere, it's not just here.
It's a problem everywhere, y'all. It's not just firemen, it's a problem everywhere. Nobody got any questions to ask for motion? I'll, I'll check on those two charges. Where at?
Gans, Gans waiting on a pardon.
That's why we have, we'll find, I'll find out what the rock was for and Mike went to the hospital, but Mike just informed us that the rock, dump truck's in the shop, Gans right on the floor. Dump truck, well, been there about four weeks. Seems like I remember a rock saying something about I had to get a check. Something called, had something called. I am curious, Mike went to the hospital. Nobody got any other questions I need to ask for? I'm going to pay the other bill, we'll check on that.
My friend.
James Motion, keep setting all in favor. All right, nobody else got anything, I need to ask for motion for a jury.
State Bank and Trust has been invested in Winfield and Marion County for more than a century and today we remain deeply committed to meeting the needs of local families and businesses with excellent financial products and friendly down home service.
But more than that, we're dedicated to supporting the growth, success, and well-being of our community as a whole. Because when it comes right down to it, there's nothing more important than community.
And just like our outstanding city officials, police and fire departments, you can count on State Bank and Trust to help make Winfield and Marion County a great place to live for everyone who calls this area home.
Now open in Guen, Alabama, Pig Out invites you to come by and try their delicious barbecue. Country style vegetables, homemade desserts, burgers, and many more items. We serve a lunch buffet on Sundays, Sunday 11 to 2 p.m. Our hours are Thursday 11 to 6 p.m., Friday and Saturday 11 to 8 p.m. Call us today at 205-468-0574. Pig Out is located in Guen, Alabama, in the old Jimbo's barbecue building.
Hello, I'm Chuck at Span Hardware and Equipment, Winfield, Alabama. So happy to be with you today and would like to tell you about all the things we have for the upcoming spring season. We've got you covered if you want chainsaws, weed trimmers, lawn mowers, zero turn, regular lawn tractors. We also have a good selection of barbecue grills, so come see us. Thank you.
He's here, owner operator of Alexander's Heating and Air Conditioners.
We've been family owned and operated since 1954, proudly serving Marion, Fayette, and Lamar County. We are carrier factory authorized dealers, but service all makes...
My wife at Fayette and we'll be happy to serve you.
Hi, my name is Chris Nelson, owner of Nelson Boys Paint and Body LLC, located State Highway 129, Winfield, Alabama. At Nelson Boys Paint and Body, our goals are to meet your expectations in repairing or painting your vehicle. Stop by for a free estimate. Our services include glass replacement, small and large auto repairs, and we have top notch paint booth for your painting needs. We take all insurance and can save you on your stuff. Come see us and let our over 40 years experience work for you. We're here to assist you and to help you on all your auto body and paint needs. Come see us.
Plan your perfect stay at the Holiday Inn in Guen off of I-22. Enjoy our amazing onsite restaurant and bar with a lunch buffet every Sunday. Relax with a quick getaway with your family and make a splash in our outdoor pool. Book your next event with us, call us at 205-468-4625.
At Bowen Funeral Home, we understand the importance of a personal commitment to provide quality service and products with value to meet every family's need. You will find very caring professionals that truly desire to offer dignified service and true value that families need and desire during the loss of their loved one. With our newly renovated facilities, services, and quality merchandise, you can rest assured that we stand ready to meet the needs of your family in honoring lives lived. Bowen Funeral Home is located at 981 Alabama Highway 253, just south of Winfield High School. Call Tony Bowen, certified funeral service practitioner at 205-487-4327.
Hey, I'm Loa Worthy with the Worthy Christmas Tree Farm here in Amory, Mississippi. We'd like to thank you for your business this year. We've had a great year and really enjoyed spending time with your family out here making I wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.